Okay. I'll rise, please, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The roll call, please.
Fontanis?
Here.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Nathan?
Here.
Councilwoman Souza?
Absent.
Is absent, I'm sorry. Councilman Stacks?
Here.
Mayor Cohen?
Here.
Okay, we have draft unapproved minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council held February 15th. We won't be able to treat the February 6th minutes because we don't have four people with us tonight who are there. So, any changes? Well, we do have updated minutes, yes.
Yes.
Any further changes on the minutes?
Yes, I did receive one more substantive comment that was written incorrectly from Councilwoman Johnson. Thank you for that. And these updates have been made pursuant to re-watching back the video, and I believe they are consistent with the video at this time, so.
Okay, so then, may I have a motion with respect to the minutes?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I wanted to correct the record because Carolyn took great minutes, and Councilman Nathan stated that he, in 14 months he's been on the council, he's never heard of a tree subcommittee. And I wanted to direct everybody to the meeting, the minutes of the first meeting of the year in 2022, where the rationale for the flag lot subdivision law happened, and it was explained that there was a tree subcommittee, when Mr. Mika was the one who suggested we undertake that legislation. So, and I get it, you know, it's been over a year, come on, right? I get it. But then subsequently, on January 23rd, Mr. Nathan and I had coffee at the granola bar, and we had a very collegial conversation. And at the end of our conversation, he asked me what my goals for the year were. And within my goals, I stated tree legislation. We have to retake it because it's been stop and start and stop and start. We've done this, we've done that, but I just want to move forward with it. He seemed enthusiastic at the time, so it's really disconcerting, and I really don't understand why he stated what he said at the last meeting.
Well, I'll have to answer that. I really think we should just move on, but I will respond. Yes, we did have coffee, and I was very enthusiastic, and I remain very enthusiastic about addressing the matter of trees in Rye, and I applaud everyone's enthusiasm for that, every single member of this council, and I'm glad for that. What I said was that in my 14 months, there had been no substantive work that I was aware of. There may have been a committee, but I gather it was not a committee that was active. I believe it met once.
You said you had never heard of any subcommittee. I think that's wrong.
I did not say I'd never heard of a subcommittee, but if I did, then that's a slip of the tongue. But the point is-
Acknowledged.
-that the meeting was positioned as the culmination of work, and I was not aware of substantive work. Informal conversations among council expressing enthusiasm for subjects are useful and great, but they are not work. So we have not done the work-
I explained to you why we had to stop and start and stop and start.
And that's completely acceptable.
Okay, I'm gonna step in.
That's completely acceptable, and I'm fine with it, and we should just re-
Enough, enough he said, she said.
I'm speaking, and I'll finish my comments as an elected official on the dais. And as I said, I'm enthusiastic for our work. I applaud everyone's enthusiasm. Passion got ahead of process, and let's focus on the work ahead, and I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so now I will speak a little on this because I was not present. I wasn't able to be at the February 15th meeting due to a pre-planned vacation, but there was much I must rebut relating to the effort to mitigate by moratorium, the clearcutting of approximately 40 mature trees on an unkempt lot at Turf Avenue, and to accelerate revision of our tree law. To describe this event in the simplest terms, for the first time ever, I learned of a substantial tree clearcut before it happened, and only because it was about to happen outside my back window. On the same day, I learned the city's jurisdictional position and the possibilities for relief, notified the deputy mayor, and recused myself. The clearcut took place one day later, before there was any council action or even a meeting. After the clearcut, I rejoined council deliberation. Several of my council colleagues had scheduled a meeting, the sole purpose of which was to schedule a later public hearing date. I joined that meeting. In hindsight, I know I did the right thing, and that my pro-action colleagues, Carolina Johnson, Ben Stacks, and Julie Souza, also did the right thing. What was our choice? Ignore what we knew and make no effort to mitigate? We would have been roundly criticized for that, without a doubt. Let me cut to the chase by going to the Board of Ethics' so-called confidential advisory opinion, requested by three council members unwilling to take action against the tree destruction that I had discovered. The Board of Ethics' opinion displays profound disrespect for process, fact, and for the people whose conduct it criticizes. Plus, it disenfranchises my neighbors. It cuts them off from timely council assistance. It cuts them off just because they are my neighbors. Here are a few headlines about the Board of Ethics' opinion. The Board of Ethics spoke to none of the people it criticizes. In fact, the board refused to hear us, a fatal flaw from a fairness and accuracy perspective. The board apparently did not watch the video of the February 6th meeting, which could have answered some of its questions. The factual recital in the opinion is full of misstatements and omissions. Example: Why was I involved at the outset? Missing facts. I was the person who discovered that the clearcut was about to happen. I looked out my back window, saw a man walking in the woods, went out and spoke to him, and learned he was pricing the clearcut to take place within a week. That's where the extraordinary rush, the Board of Ethics' words, "to do something" begins. That's when the clock started ticking. Additional obscured fact: A special meeting to be noticed immediately was suggested by Corporation Council to try to beat that clock. It was not my suggestion, though it was a good one. It's my understanding the deputy mayor and pro-action council members sent the meeting notice out the next day. The Board of Ethics suggests there wasn't a pre-existing concerted neighbor outcry to the council before the deputy mayor called the meeting. But how could there be, given the compressed timing? Missing fact: There couldn't be a pre-existing outcry. I had just discovered the clearcut about to happen. Neighbors were just learning about it, and they were learning about it primarily through former city council member Emily Hurd, herself a neighbor, who wasn't telling them that they needed to email or call the council. Why should she? She was communicating her own concern and theirs directly to the council, including to unwilling council members, and she had every reason to think her voice would be respected. Additional missing fact: There has already been massive public concern expressed in Rye about clearcutting and tree removal in general. That public concern is a constant and helped motivate our recent legislation curbing flag lots and steep slopes, and our tree-saving motive was articulated at that time. To sharpen the point, the Turf Avenue lot looks a lot like a flag lot, but is not primarily by virtue of prior subdivision. Both site-specific and general public concern about the clearcut was also evident in the February 6th meeting, though called by the deputy mayor on 72 hours' notice. The Board of Ethics wonders why similar speed wasn't invoked in the passage of our two prior moratoriums, though both those moratoriums had distinctly different factual settings. Missing facts: In those two cases, the council did not have notice of an instantly immediate threat. In the flag lot and steep slope case, the clearcut and subdivision had already happened. Yet even so, many on the council fought for but did not achieve a moratorium with retroactive effect. In the case of rock chipping and blasting, we were aware that we had adequate time to move by regular process. Finally, the board seems to assume there was some special meaningful benefit to me in seeking a moratorium. I'm doubtful, but if there was, the remedy was my recusal, not the recusal of the whole council. So why did I voluntarily recuse the very same first day I've mentioned? The words "directly impacted by the clearcut" are used in the Board of Ethics' opinion, though I have never used them. Personal benefit also is used. This is worth looking at. The ethics cases distributed by the Corporation Council show financial or employment benefit to be at issue in those cases, and to potentially justify recusal of a member of the deliberative body, but those cases do not support recusal of the whole body. Let's remember what was at stake behind my house. A moratorium would not save the unkempt woods. A new tree law would not save the unkempt woods. It likely would just moderate the extent of tree removal. In any case, moratorium or not, new tree law or not, a new home will be built in place of the woods. Many would argue that the new home will improve my property value, certainly as a replacement for the unkempt woods, and whether or not a few more trees are saved. My interest was only to save as many trees as possible. And I recused myself to make sure that my having that interest was okay. Even imagining great financial benefit to me, though, the remedy is that I recuse. To say that even after my recusal, immediate action by the rest of the counted council is tainted is unreasonable. And to say that even after the clearcut has been done, the February 6th meeting was tainted is long past unreasonable. These are just a few headlines. The Board of Ethics missed the boat? Nice people, bad job. Its failure of an opinion lends support to the worst suspicions now fashionable in our dismal public discourse. It levels those suspicions at four hard-working volunteers. It cuts my neighbors off from council help because they are my neighbors. And what can I say about my three unwilling and complaining council colleagues who refuse to act, Nathan Henderson and Fontanis? I won't dignify their conduct with speech. A final footnote: I became mayor more than five years ago wishing to get things done, and your city has been getting things done. Some people, alternately, tell us to slow down and then chide us for being too slow. Yes, we've had to invest time and energy in dealing with COVID. Yes, responding to Ida and putting flooding first has cost us substantially in both staff and council time. In 2020, just before COVID, I promised a review of the tree law. Flag lot restrictions and steep slope restrictions in early 2022 were in part a result of that review. Continuing work on the tree law was shouldered aside this past fall by, among other things, attention to flooding, our capital projects program, rock chipping and blasting law amendments, a new leaf blower law, and by the annual budget cycle. A new draft tree law should soon be public, and I thank everyone for their patience. Flooding update.
What was the emergency if there was going to be no benefit from our action?
I don't think you understood what I said. There would have been some trees saved, there would have been a rational program for tree saving around construction. I hope we're going to see that in our new tree law, and if not, we could have managed it in the exception process to the moratorium. I'm sorry you didn't understand that.
So there would be trees saved where? On that lot?
On that lot and throughout Rye.
So, had a moratorium been noticed successfully, there would have been trees saved on the lot adjacent to your house?
There would, I hope, have been trees saved. How many? To what extent? I don't know. The woods would have been substantially removed.
And that was your objective in participating in the meeting on the 6th?
To get a moratorium and accelerate a tree law in Rye.
I just have one technical question because this, Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't, I too want to move forward, but this has come up in the press, and this has come up, and I think the citizens deserve to know the truth about this. When it says on this ethics opinion, confidential advisory opinion, Councilor Wilson, could you please explain what exactly that means? Were the recipients free to share or not share?
The advisory opinion was delivered to you as a confidential opinion. That's how it works with the Board of Ethics. What the recipient, the requister, does with that opinion is, for lack of a better term, up to you, with the understanding that the requister's identities or persons' identities are redacted. In this instance, my understanding was the three of you agreed to receive the same opinion, and at some point in time after receiving it, the three of you, I learned of this after the fact, but conferred and decided whatever you did with respect to dissemination.
Thank you.
Kristin, I absolutely reject that. It's a document labeled confidential. I would guess it was distributed by the board intending to keep it confidential. There is a separate provision in the Code of Ethics that obliges each officer to keep confidential, confidential documents that the officer receives. We can go on from here. So, Greg, I have tried to do a recapitulation because we've had a lot of small bites, and I'd appreciate it if you would listen and step in whenever you think appropriate to catch me if I miss something. So the city has retained the Ramble Engineering Firm to work on a number of flood-related items. Most importantly, Ramble undertook a review of the Blind Brook watershed and the library of prior studies, and created for us a multi-factor matrix to allow prioritization of flood mitigation projects. This work served as the basis for collaboration with a funding consultant we hired, DCMC, on a FEMA BRIC grant application that is in process with FEMA. That grant application sought funding for additional study and potential design and build of a Birm's retention project on the SUNY Purchase Campus, study of potential enlargement of the Bowman Upper Pond and raising of Bowman Dam, and review of certain city rules and regulations relevant to city flood readiness. Ramble may now help us with certain criticisms raised with respect to the Birm's project, and with looking preliminarily at additional potential projects not within our present FEMA application. Ramble is also helping us with a long-in-process and nearly-complete emergency action plan and periodic engineering assessment of Bowman Dam. We believe that the current dam classification of the Bowman Dam overstates this small flood control installation's risk, and we believe that reclassification is forthcoming. Moving to Westchester Airport and environs. We recently learned that, contrary to prior reports, the airport runoff retention basins were overwhelmed by Hurricane Ida's downpour. We learned that there are two retention basins at present, one of which requires dredging to restore capacity, and that a third basin has been discussed in the past but is presently not in planning. We also learned that the airport itself experienced surface water flooding from nearby Connecticut, and it's unclear if the surface water flows into Blind Brook. We are initiating a conversation with the county about creating the third retention pond and are working with our neighbors in Rye Brook to ascertain whether the Connecticut runoff at the airport is of mutual concern. I don't know, Greg, if you've heard anything from Chris Bradbury about that?
No, there was somewhat related to that. There was a meeting today with SUNY regarding their own independent study of the campus and of direct runoff from the airport. They are engaging the construction fund to assist them in that regard, but nothing more in terms of the runoff from the airport.
Moving to the DEC Resilient Stream Study. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation undertook a study of the Blind Brook watershed that we've seen, excuse me, in draft. That study lays out with clarity the fact that many of the bridges, culverts, and channel features on Blind Brook are inadequate for present flood levels that may be realized on Blind Brook. DEC proposes gradual replacement or renovation to ease this, but has cautioned that upstream mitigation should be prioritized over the most substantive remediations within the city of Rye to avoid increasing flood damage within the city. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We began discussions with the Army Corps in 2019, with New York State DEC participating. Out of that discussion came the Army Corps' 2021 federal interest determination with respect to our watershed. That determination permits the Corps to go forward with what's called a CAP-205 program study, which may cost as much as $1 million and require funding from both the federal government and local government. The federal government has reserved $700,000 toward our CAP-205 needs, but only $500,000 of that may be allocated to the study phase. We are seeking state partnership in the study cost. The CAP-205 program caps project cost at $15 million, and it seems likely that an Army Corps Blind Brook watershed project would exceed that figure. Current thinking is to pursue the CAP-205 program and seek congressional help in converting to a larger-scale general investigation study. Department of Interior NRCS floodplain buyout program. Our talks with this federal program that buys out homes to restore floodplain ceased after what appeared to be a conclusion that Rye's home prices are too high for this program, and areas of likely buyout would not produce the concentrated floodplain restoration that the program seeks. New York Rising Projects. The Milton Road Drainage Project and Bowman Upper Pond Cleaning are winding up. The stream gauge stanchions have been placed with gauges to follow. Other sources of funding. With the help of our advisors, including our Washington and Albany consultants in vision, we'll be seeking other sources of federal funding to support ongoing work, such as the data collection and algorithm development needed to utilize the Blind Brook stream gauges. We'll also be seeking access to New York State funding that may be made available pursuant to the Environmental Bond Act and county funding to the extent available. What did I miss?
The only thing that I think is worth mentioning is that we did also submit a grant application to the New York Bridge Program in this, about a month ago. One of the bridges or one of the crossings that was identified in the DEC study is the Locust Avenue Bridge. That is in need of replacement, not immediately, but will be in need of a replacement in the next five to seven years. We are seeking grant for the funding of that bridge replacement that would be redesigned, more compliant with the Blind Brook watershed, but also meet the, you know, the normal engineering requirements for the bridge itself.
Thank you. Update on capital projects.
So am I the first one to use the?
Very first one.
That's appropriate, I think, actually. I'm gonna probably not get it right, but. Good evening, I'm Christian Miller, I'm the city planner, I'm sort of pinching for Ryan Cohen, so no tough questions about any of the projects, but I wanted to briefly bring you up to speed on some of the current capital projects that the city council has prioritized. Whoops. We'll go through these briefly. These are the project, and there are various stages of the process. I'll go through each one. We're doing good, in fact, we've completed some phases of those. Some are underway, and some are getting much closer to getting to a bidding process. So the first one is Building 5. This is the new public works administration and garage building, replacing the existing garage that's over 100 years old. We're about 60% through design. One of the things that we're focused on in request to the city council, looking at solar and geothermal. That preliminary analysis has come back pretty positive, so that's good news. In other words, the potential costs, the rough costs versus the return on investment seems to be favorable. So they're still doing more work to, those are based on sort of generic estimates, so they're getting more specific cost numbers.
For both solar and geo?
Yes, yes. So, completed the Board of Architecture review, completed, we'll be doing seeker and LWRP requires, those are required by the city council. You did some of that, you had that preliminary conversation that was referred to the planning commission, and they had a favorable recommendation with respect to those requirements. So, if all goes well, we're starting to build in potentially fall of this year.
And just because, if memory serves me, we were at one time looking at a price tag on this building that started with a 5. And I'm just wondering how-
Yeah, it was pre-COVID?
-how confident we are in our present 7.
There's been no change in the cost estimate at this time. So, remember, it's the return on investment for some of those things, so there's a payback, but I don't know how. Or- but I don't know how or if that's even affecting the overall cost in terms of the solar and geothermal installations. So that's our number seven. Probably will not be doing another cost estimate. The next cost estimate will be the bid. That'll be the best estimate you can get. This is Building Seven. This is right next to the building you just saw. This is also at Public Works. Pretty much completed the design. This actually was the old salt shed. And so they've actually started mobilizing this week to begin that construction. There's a bit of a lead time for the trusses that are required for the roof, so maybe late, you know, late spring, early summer. We're looking at a completion there.
That's great.
Salt Shed. This project is actually sort of broken up in a few phases. The first phase, the site work, is essentially being done by Public Works, and that's done to, because they can, which is pretty incredible, they can tackle these kinds of projects. So it starts with the removal of the soil stockpiling. That has started actually already. So there are going to be, there'll be various bidding elements to this. The prefab wall that the Public Works will build will have to be bid for the materials, but the construction of the wall will be done by Public Works as well as some of the earthwork related to that. And then into this summer, you'll see more bidding for the actual construction of the salt shed itself, the foundation as well as the building. On this as well, we have to return to the Planning Commission or return to the city council for final seeker and L W R P. This too did get a favorable review from the Planning Commission.
Christian, we talked about adding a floodgate to this building, the salt shed. I don't know if that's something that is, the design is included in where you are right now, or is that something that you're still looking at?
Yeah, substantially above the flood elevation, but my understanding is, this is belt and suspenders, that those flood doors are being part of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
D P W Fuel Tank. This is looking at a summer construction. This is something that will be done. I believe there's an existing state contract which we can, not a state contract, but piggyback on a contract from another municipality. So that'll be happening this summer. Forest Avenue Sidewalks. We had a recent meeting, we had a couple meetings. We are just about done with design, but we did hear some comments at the last meeting that we really want to spend a little extra time to make sure that the actual design is, we've explored all the alternatives. So that is slowing us down a little bit. So we're going to need some additional survey work, some additional design work to look at, confirm that some of the design elements are as they need to be or want to be.
Christian, does this include maybe relooking at those sidewalk crossings?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That's where we're spending most of that energy. City Hall H V A C. This too went around and around for the location of the condenser units. We think they're programmed to be right outside this door. We think we'll be able to lower them just enough so they go below the fence, not obscure any windows, be below a fence that would be placed in front of them. They're working on the final design and also really updating the availability of various product and stuff. As you know, supply chain really does affect this. So I don't know what the lead time is, but I'm anticipating that it could be many months. So again, that's why that spring construction is so far out, looking to build this fall, this winter. But it's really going to be dependent on the availability of the various components. So the channel dredge was completed. So this fall, October, November, they'll be doing the basin. So that project is completed.
The Coast Guard's putting back their buoys?
We're, there's two different surveys that are being put together now that we have to provide to the Coast Guard for them to make a final determination. But I would hope that that'll be to them in the next two weeks. We'll wait on a decision after that.
And that's all I have.
That's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Residents may be heard. Do we have any sign-ins? Brooke Packard.
Good evening, my name is Brooke Packard. Well, that last city council meeting was quite the reality TV show, wasn't it? Let's correct some of the statements made, beginning with the frivolous claim that three council members were playing politics. There was no playing. Those council members employed a political strategy to disrupt a series and cycle of feckless moratoriums. Moreover, no council member can state that they know the concerns of Rye citizens because the communication system speaking from this podium is inadequate. The three-minute time limit applied haphazardly is insufficient and ableist. There is no conversation but a one-way supplication, and this is followed by the finessing of residents' concerns by consultants. The reality is, Rye citizens have little agency when it comes to ordinances that impact our lives. The council must find better platforms for communication that respect residents' expertise. However, the council can take one action immediately to improve communication, that is to verify the details given by those speaking at this podium. This week, I contacted the city clerk as I noticed incorrect addresses in the published approved minutes. One address was not a residence, but that of a truck park. In another case, I have reason to believe that the person claiming to live in Rye from this podium does not. Now, now it gets fascinating, because I asked to verify this so the minutes, which show up verbatim in the Rye record, could be corrected. And thank you, you helped me out by saying "the approved minutes do not reflect the truth."
Excuse me, I never said that.
I have it in an email.
I never said that.
I have it, first of all, hit pause, please, because you're interrupting my time. Thank you. I have it in an email, and I'm happy to read it out loud and send it to the council.
I can send it to them as well.
Okay, fine. But you said "the minutes do not reflect the truth."
No, I did not.
All right.
Let's go on, please.
But what the speaker at this podium states, you said, "it is not, quote, 'the place of the city to change what the speaker says' that would be an inaccurate depiction of what was conveyed at the meeting." So please consider the consequences of allowing someone to fabricate an address or anything else. What are their intentions and where does it stop? One could misrepresent qualifications or conflicts of interest. The result is, you shelve the conserves of the real stakeholders, actual Rye residents. Moreover, false information in the council minutes call into question the entire veracity of a meeting. In the era of personalities like George Santos, have we learned nothing about the dangers of misrepresentation? The city cannot wink at these inaccuracies. The compact of trust between a community and governance snaps. The city of Rye has the resources at hand to fact-check a speaker's claims, and reading a printed disclaimer before minutes published in the Rye record will be embarrassing. And I'm not just talking to the council, I'm talking to everyone watching at home who cannot attend this meeting. They trust that what they read in the minutes is the truth, that when someone says they live here, they actually live here. And it's not fair to all of us to have this misrepresentation in the paper. Thank you.
Can you please state your address? You forgot.
That's another interesting thing. It is not required by law that I state my address. So I have that in the email. It is a norm. However, I could give a totally fake address, as has been done in the past, or we need to have it verified.
So which one is your address?
What?
Which one is your address?
I'd be happy to. 26 Oakwood Avenue for over 20 years, and we've been denuded of trees forever, and no one's really acted on that.
We're trying.
Thank you.
Bonnie Council.
I live at 14 Fairlawn Street. On Monday, my partner and I, as some neighbors, attended a meeting of the bar to discuss proposed demolition of a house at 26 Fairlawn Street and the very large house that is planned to replace it. Of several requests and suggestions made on the size and design of the house, each was met with a comment by the architect that the builder, who was not even there, quote, "wouldn't want that." My question to you is, why does the builder get to decide what kind of house goes into our neighborhood? Because Rye is a town owned not by the people, but by the developers, the realtors, and the landscapers. We, the people, no longer have a voice. Because zoning laws and codes have been weakened by developers and contractors who managed to get the rules bent in their favor. A huge percentage of new houses in Rye are built on spec. Perspective buyers will have no knowledge of the closed-door dealings that would have taken place before the house was built. They have no idea of the loopholes that were used to build their brand-new five-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bath house with tax-free nine-foot basement, complete with extra bedroom, bathroom, and humongous rec room. Rye residents, so many of us who've lived here for years have watched as our neighborhoods have been negatively impacted. Trees have been felled, as rock chipping has gone on for weeks and months, as sewers have overflowed and streets have flooded, all because of houses built that were too large, houses whose developers managed to subvert city codes via loopholes that should never have been allowed. Builders won't build huge houses with nine-foot-deep basements and livable attics if zoning doesn't allow them to. They do so now because they can. There's a lot of money in it for them. Money that Rye doesn't even make because half of every house is untaxable square footage. A neighborhood gets ruined, a bunch of people are made unhappy, and the city can only reap tax dollars on half the square footage of the house that is causing all this disruption. This is why the loopholes need to be closed. Then maybe the houses won't be so huge. Maybe they will actually complement the surrounding neighborhood. Maybe middle-income people will actually afford to be able to move into Rye. Maybe realtors would sell houses to people instead of developers. Maybe they'll actually start putting up for sale signs on these properties so real people driving through the neighborhoods actually know when a house is on the market. No more closed-door dealings between realtors and developers that are essentially keeping middle-income people out of Rye, period. Is this by design? One can't help but wonder. What I do know is there are a lot of houses, small houses, that a lot of people out there would love as either starter homes or to downsize into, but they never get the chance because developers are scooping them up and demolishing them, along with Rye's history and along with Rye's character and charm. I myself have photographed so, so many nice houses that we have no more. Close the loopholes, please. Give us back our voices.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Sue Drew in.
Eddie, I'm Sue Drew in. I live at 57 Moorhead Drive. I live in Rye and also work as a landscape designer and have had the honor of working with a number of homeowners here in Rye and the Lower Westchester Fairfield area, and have worked on a few public projects to promote sustainable and resilient landscaping, pollinator pathways, and rain gardens to reduce runoff going to Long Island Sound. I also served the city of Rye on the Sustainability Committee for many years. I want to acknowledge and support your endeavoring to protect trees. I look forward to seeing the city's ideas that will help preserve, protect, and increase Rye's existing tree canopy. Newcomers to Rye, people coming from the city, other states, and sometimes other countries, as well as longtime Rye residents, developers, and tree companies have various levels of knowledge when it comes to caring for the trees and other aspects of their land. The Oakland Beach Avenue property is an example that many of us have studied. The existing lot was subdivided to build two new houses on the property. All or almost all the trees were removed before a site plan was submitted. This is where you must be careful to protect the trees, possibly even inventory the existing tree canopy of those lots to protect it from being dramatically altered. Some home builders make a point of working around the existing trees. Many others want to clear the space for practical reasons, like access for large equipment. Leaving trees doesn't usually add much value to homes. Mature trees might help a house sell quicker by boosting curb appeal, but doesn't earn home builders any more money. For them, it's easy to quantify the value of the property, which is basically the number of square feet, the number of bedrooms, and bathrooms. Three other things I would like to just keep on your radar moving forward. Larger property owners, just to give a few examples, Rye Country Day, Rye City Schools, the Osborne Home, the owners of the former Avon property. Many of these property owners are in the process of significantly changing their impervious coverage and will be adding new buildings, building changes, and parking. Will they be included or exempted from the new tree protections? Second, a tree inventory or a tree survey is a process that can be undertaken by experts, sometimes with grant funding, that will help the city understand if its tree protection measures are working the way we want them to. It can help us understand our current tree stock. But it's not beeping, sorry. I just have a few more sentences. Our current tree stock as we keep stock on our pace of development. And finally, consider a new tree board or commission consisting of members of standing committees as well as expert arborists and conservationists. A tree board could oversee a free tree program, could help implement the Arbor Day program, could help oversee the urban tree canopy program, and could help use the tree fund to provide a living legacy to residents interested in contributing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Bucciari.
I have a photograph. Can I pass it out to you, bro?
Yes.
It's my appreciate.
Sure, you can do that, Rob.
Sure. Hi, everyone, I'm Mike Bucciari. I live at 57 Waters Edge. I'm proud to say I live in Rye. It's a beautiful, beautiful place, as is this building and all the people that live in it. And so I stand before you, and I'm showing you this photograph. I don't know if anyone can tell me where that window is in our community.
Police station.
Police station. Thank you, Mayor, I love you. That window represents our police station. Every window in the police station looks like this, decayed. The front door of the police station is decayed. Christian just spoke about $17 million worth of renovations to our town up on that board just a few minutes ago. $17 million. You can't cost $7,000 to possibly paint the doors and the windows of our police station. Thousands of people pass by that police station every day, going to the train station and all the surrounding businesses. But it's the police men and women that go through those doors proudly dressed, ready to run through that door at any moment to stand in front of a bully. There are people they don't even know. Me, my wife, and all the others. But yet, we let them walk through doors and look through windows like this. And if you speak to the police, men and women on the side, nobody wants to come forward, but they tell you how disgusted they are about how the police station looks. I can't say much more than that, except that. I can't say much more than that, except that that was 17 million, and I could probably do this job for $7,000. Why can't we clean up the police station? Just the outside appearance of it, just for the sole purposes of Rye itself, the beauty of Rye, the self-respect of why, what we're doing, and what you're all doing for all of us. I think it's, it's, I'm proud to have you guys on board, working hard for us, but this picture, it doesn't represent the proud, the brave, the people who are ready to come at a moment's notice. Paint the building, paint the windows, paint the doors, let the people walking through those doors, ready to help us, feel proud of what they do, you know? Is that a yes from everybody? Yes, come on. Is it a yes? Is it a yes? Can we say yes to paint the police station?
I'm going to ask Greg to talk about what the regular maintenance program is, because I
Sure.
assume he may wish to.
Sure. So what you didn't see in the presentation tonight, I know it's easy to focus on the $17 million, what you didn't see there tonight is the $1 million that we spent in the police department in the last 12 months on radio communication, let me finish, please, on the radio communication equipment, three police cars, a brand-new bathroom in the firehouse, the repainting of this building on the exterior, which had not been done in 17 years, the replacement of a million dollars, or improvements of a million dollars at rec. I'm not saying that this is, that this is acceptable at all. What I'm saying is that it's easy in isolation to pick one thing or two things and to focus on that. We have underspent as a community for decades on regular maintenance. For the first time in the city's history, we put in place last year a vehicle maintenance plan to even plan for the replacement of vehicles, not painting, you know, not, not painting window sills, but literally replacing vehicles that didn't have funding for. You're absolutely right. This is not how we want our city to look.
It's not acceptable, right?
And it's not how we intend it. We have, for the first time ever in the last three months, appointed or added a supervisor to oversee the entire city inventory of infrastructure for maintenance things, for these types of items. So I'm not suggesting that this is appropriate. What I'm saying is you can't take in isolation one thing and say, "We're not spending X." We are, we are spending within our budget, we'll continue doing this, but let me tell you, putting police cars on the road and giving police officers the communication equipment they need is the priority over painting window sills.
You're missing the point, though. You're missing the point, and I appreciate what you said, and I respect what you said, but I heard the same story a year ago, the same exact story, and with no disrespect. For somebody who's gonna put on a vest that, that's manufactured, manufactured to stop a bullet, they don't feel proud walking through that door. Yes, if you can't buy a police car, that's a big problem. I'll buy a, I'll buy a police car. I'll put police cars on the road in Rye. Alls I'm asking for is a little bit of paint. $2.5 million in HVAC system for this, this building? $2.5 million? That's what you just showed up there. It can't, it's less than, if I put a GoFundMe together, by the end of the week, I'm sure I could raise a $7,000, $10,000 a rookie. I'm just saying that
Thank you.
It's not much, right? It's not much. Mayor, it's not much.
Thank you.
Nobody said yes, though. Nobody said yes. I'm saddened by that.
We go on to the award bid for Contract 2023-01, Solid Waste Container Service Contract for the removal and disposal of the city's street sweepings and city-produced garbage.
So we're required to every five years rebid a contract. These, this is actually for two specific items. One is that every week, or twice, multiple times a week, we collect the refuse from downtown, from the various parks, and all the garbage cans around town. Those have to be hauled to the county facility. So part of this contract is for the disposal and the transport of city waste. This is not residential waste, but city waste or waste from public property. The second is that there is a, every day with our street sweepers, the material that's collected from the street can't go into the county facility, it has to be disposed of in a special facility because of the oil, the things that are on, on the street. And so this bid is for the, the order of the bid is for the collection of those two items, the storage, and ultimately the transport and disposal.
So may I have a motion, unless there are questions? May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fontanas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Suzie is absent. Councilman Stacks?
Yes.
Mayor Cohn?
So consent agenda, multiple items that I won't, excuse me, articulate separately, and would simply ask for a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Appointments to boards and commissions. Maureen, excuse me, Maureen Powers of the Zoning Board of Appeals is intending to withdraw in the next month or so, and we thank her for her service. Philip Moils will be happy, and we'll be happy to have him take her place. So may I have nods on that? Old business, new business?
I just want to thank, to, to end with a positive note, I want to thank the staff and the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Commission Committee. We have such wonderful new side crossings on our street, especially in my neighborhood, that's why I noticed them. Rye Town Park has more than I thought we were gonna get. There's one on Milton Road. We're using it all the time, and I'm just so grateful. People, I stop, wait to cross, have conversations with people who are so excited to have these. So, yes, we are getting things done, and we are very, very grateful, and wanted you to please share that with the staff.
Definitely pass that along. Thank you.
Okay, may I have the final motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.